Hey, good evening. Welcome to our Council and Committee the whole meeting for September 5th, 2023. Bonjour et bienvenue à notre réunion de conférence et comité plaignant pour le 5 septembre. We will open our meeting this evening with a land acknowledgement provided by councillor Bonney.
Merci maire. Je souhaite prendre un moment pour souligner l'importance du territoire sur lequel nous sommes rassemblés, la municipalité du Népfasing. Où se reconnaît avec respect que nous sommes réunis sur les terres ancestrales des peuples Anishinaabe, sur les territoires traditionnels de première nation des Pésing, Comargemi et Dokiis, désignés par le traité Robinson. Nous honorons leur lien historique avec le territoire et nous valorisons leur contribution considérable au façonnement, au renforcement de nos communautés. Cefaisant, nous réaffirmons notre engagement et notre responsabilité envers la réconciliation et l'aménoration de notre compréhension des peuples autochtones locaux et de leur culture. Merci.
Merci. I will now take any declarations of pecuniary interest, seeing none. We do have an addendum for this evening that was sent to you this afternoon and your coffee is placed on your desk. So Madam Mayor.
It is moved by councillor Saint-Louis and seconded by councillor Restil. Do it resolve that the addendum for the meeting of council committee of the whole held on September the 5th, 2023 be adopted as presented.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. Thank you.
It is moved by councillor Couchein and seconded by councillor Restil. Do it resolve the agenda for council and committee of the whole meeting held on September the 5th, 2023 be adopted as presented.
All in favor? Carried. We cannot have any delegations or petitions for this evening. However, I will just note for the public that we do have a special meeting scheduled for Thursday, September 7th, at which time we will have a delegation from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing Regional Office to present the report on the West Nepesing policies, practices, and procedures that was ordered by the minister during the last term of council. We'll proceed on to committee of the whole, general government. We have a couple of items. And to start us off this evening, we will go to Mr. Barbeau, our CEO, with an update on the term plan.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening, Your Worship, members of council. Council will recall that they undertook a very extensive planning process for the term getting this municipality back on track. A lot of work was done with council and then subsequently with staff to provide a report that is more strategic in nature other than just checking off what they used to call wish lists for council. This format under the mayor's leadership has been undertaken, in my opinion, is something that is a real breath of fresh air. And as you can see by the report, it's obviously bought into wholeheartedly by all levels of staff, which is, you know, which is quite pleasing to me. I had heard a whisper, and rightly so, from from a councillor or that a councillor was talking about, hey, when are we going to get an update? And we're remiss on that. I think the plan was approved in April, so it's probably not a bad amount of time for us to actually carry out some stuff. And so that's, that's what you have before you. So the plan that was developed, there were a lot of really good ideas during the facilitation session. And from that perspective, from that point, the communications team clustered a lot of the initiatives into categories or pillars. So the pillars are community development for a vibrant present future, presence and future, sorry, community-centric facilities and public spaces, strategic management and policies, functional and dependable infrastructure, and efficient and effective service delivery. So clustering all of our initiatives under those categories was a really intelligent thing to do. So about three weeks ago, just prior to AMO, councillor staff got together and got together with the term plan. And it was shared to them that they would be providing an operational update in each of their areas and not just to concentrate on the areas where they have primary focus, such as the facilities manager talking about facilities, but there's probably some initiatives that each of them are doing that touch upon others. So they were asked to look at all of the plan. And I was very heartened in receiving the information to see the amount of data that was collected by staff. And then again, hats off to our communications. We can't say enough about them. I joke around that, you know, their job, you know, is to take old curmudgeons like me and try and make me look more modern and intelligent. And hopefully, they've done an okay job here. So what you have before you is their first update, and there'll be some refinements. I don't think it would be a good use of time. I think council has the document, and they've had the document since Friday. And where what you see is the different pillars and basically the projects that were identified, perhaps a few other projects with some subcategories in those, in those projects, and then the updates, whether they were complete, in progress, on hold for whatever reason, whether they needed council discussion, discussions, and newly added projects. Now, it was pointed out to me at the start or before the meeting that there may be some omissions in the document. When you have this much work done, you may have some questions or some information that I might be able to answer or staff may be able to answer, or we may have to add it and get back to you. One that was highlighted by councillor Gagnon is the streetlights and ditching and that kind of update. I saw that that was left blank. So those types of issues, if you care to highlight what additional information you want, we'll be happy to get back to you with the information you require. I don't know, you know, how else to proceed, Madam Mayor, if they just want to open it up for questions. Try and do the best that we can.
Yeah, I would definitely like to open it up for any questions that our members have, that our sort of have. It is a really well-done document. And before passing it on, I'd just like to commend both you, Mr. Barbeau, and all the staff for collecting all the information, putting it in a format that's really easy to understand for councillors. And I think that it is encouraging to see and be able to track the progress of the different initiatives. And with that, I would open the floor to our members. Councillor Gagnon?
I will reiterate what you just said, Madam Mayor. Great job. A lot of details. I think it's the best report I've seen for a strat plan follow-up. If this is the first pass, I'm anxious to see the final one in two years from now. Four years, sorry, four years. Just joking. But great job, everybody, all the staff.
Yeah, I wish, again, I wish I'd take credit, but I'll take credit if there's something you don't like. But I really have to give credit to Assange Le and to Kimberly Marko, who spent a lot of time working with staff. One of the other things that happens is, you know, the staff are so focused on what they have to do that they don't really sometimes feel the importance of doing things outside of their comfort zone. And in this case, I was especially happy that they all brought their information in and supported our communications team 100%. So for the department heads, kudos to all of the managers that did that.
Councillor Restil?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say as well, I appreciate the work that's gone into this because, you know, as councillor Gagnon mentioned, sometimes in our organizations, our workplaces, we undertake exercises like this. And through no particular person's fault, it's kind of gets stale. It doesn't become that living document that we want it to become. And I think being a new council and coming together to put our ideas together and then seeing the work that staff's doing to implement some of those things or lots of those things, I'm excited too to see where the final progress is going to be as we approach the end of our term. But definitely kudos to all the staff for working on these things that we came up with as a group and want to see to help, you know, forward our community to a good place.
I'll just say in the interim here that I would hope too that for staff and staff at all levels, going through an exercise like this where it does, you know, maybe take away from that, that time that you're using to perform the focus of what your job is, it kind of allows staff to look back and feel a sense of accomplishment. You know, you get caught up in the role every day and we've got to do this, we've got to do this, we've got to do this, that sometimes you can lose sight of the progress that you've made in the longer term. And so I hope that not only does the term plan and these updates serve council, but I also hope that it serves to motivate staff and help them recognize the breadth of the work that they do and kind of look back with a sense of accomplishment for that. So any other questions? Comments on this? I would also like to suggest, just while we're having this, this comment, you know, as a living document, the term plan, I think it's important for us to look to update, update it and kind of identify new priorities on a year-to-year basis. And with that being said, I would like to propose, I got a lot of value out of our meetings last January when we got together for the first time and we were all new councillors. We didn't know each other that well. And I thought that the day that we spent working on the initial draft together was really helpful. And I would like to propose that we have a special meeting. It doesn't necessarily need to be all day, but at least, you know, one special meeting in an evening, three to four hours, where we can, before budget time, where we can look back and see what we would like to try to prioritize for next year. And then that way, staff has an opportunity to try to work those things into our budget deliberations as well. So if council is in agreement with that, I would hope to maybe in early November to set something like that up. Is that the right timing as far as budget, Mr. Barbeau?
Perhaps not. Sorry, but I'd probably try and make it a little sooner. Once we recover from tonight's meeting, we'll probably have a convers- sorry, that'd be crazy. Once we, once we are done, and we always have morning-after follow-ups with respect to action items, I think that, Madam Mayor, if you, what you're suggesting, justice, it should be maybe even sooner. Because I would like to enter council deliberations towards the times that you referenced so that we can come to a somewhat final product by November, end of November. So as you said, we would want to take your information, at least, at least any time to convert any of our ideas and incorporate them so that we can properly do justice to your evening. So I would suggest that I'd be probably throwing out proposals for any time, end of September or early October. So that gives us too much to think for.
Okay. So all the council is in agreement that that would be, that for us was in progress? I see a lot of nods. Wonderful. So what I'll do is I'll work with Mr. Barbeau over the next week to identify some potential dates that will work with the timeline that staff needs. And I'll have communication show me how to send a needle pull. And we can figure out, I will make sure that everybody is available because I think it's one of those exercises where we would like to have 100% of that participation. We'll throw out a couple of options for dates and look to arrange something where hopefully everybody can attend. Thank you very much. If nobody else has any questions, we'll move on to the next item. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda, 5.1.2, is the AMO conference delegation follow-up. And this is just a verbal report. And I think maybe what I would like to do, what I would like to do is I'll have Mr. Barbeau open. I'm going to ask each of the councillors who attended AMO and participated in the delegations just to say a few words about the experience at AMO and the delegations, and I'll close it off if that's okay. Mr. Barbeau?
Sure, I don't want to, thank you, Your Worship. I wouldn't want to speak ahead of any councillors, but it might be difficult for council to pat their own back. It would seem self-serving. I will say the following thing. So we had two delegations. One was a delegation to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing about a very specific project regarding affordable housing for seniors in partnership with West Nepesing Nonprofit Housing. The second delegation was with the Minister of Energy. It was the very first time for me. We'd never had a delegation with that minister or with that ministry. And so those were, and that was to discuss increasing capacity of our power plant and/or as well the potential unit rate that we charge for the increased capacity. So those were the two things. I will just say, Madam Mayor, I think I said it, I probably have a reputation for not wanting to be too flowery or throw compliments, but I did say, from the first meeting with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, that I probably, in my career, have done 40 delegations, and I can't think of one. That was the best delegation bar none. It was a very well-oiled presentation by the councillors. And I say the councillors because I had no, no need to provide any detailed assistance. All of it was done by your council and was extremely well-received by the Minister of Municipal Affairs and his staff. So should additional funding come up with respect to that portfolio? You're feeling very positive. The second one was more of a long shot with the Ministry of Energy. That too, I thought that was very well-presented by the chair and the councillors that were there. And so I'll only say that because I'm sure it'd be self-serving for you folks to say it, but I have to say that it was really, really impressive. Maybe I'm getting soft in my old age, but I'm pretty sure I'm right.
Councillor Restil, would you like to go first or last?
I'll go first.
Okay.
This is what happens. You, Madam Mayor, when what happens when you go last is all the good stuff already got said, so your left foot comes to share.
Pick me first?
No, I just want to say it was a great experience to be back in the delegation process. And for those at home, our constituents, I think one of the things that helped me in this whole process was the opportunity to sit down with our council members who were there and with our staff who were there with us to talk about stuff before we went in and made sure that we're all on the same page and that our approach was going to be strong and fluid. And I think that helped me, I know, going into it. I thought for the delegation with the, with Municipal Affairs and Housing, as the CEO mentioned, it was well-received. And I think some of his comments talked about moving forward with Minister Frank Pona Fares as well. So it was good to see that, you know, kind of wheels were turning there. And there was thought on the other side of the table about other opportunities to be successful in the requests that we had as a group. But the one thing I took away was just the team approach that we took. I thought it was excellent. And I, and I just wanted to share as well, I don't know if I should or not, but the comment made by the minister that he was so pleased to see such a good, well-focused council in our community after years of challenges that were here and the work that staff is doing with our council to move our community forward. So I thought that was, even aside from the delegation, the reason why we were there. I thought that was a great compliment for everybody around the table here and our staff who support us.
Councillor Saint-Louis?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I agree with what Mr. Restil is saying, that it's hard not to go first because everybody will say everything that you want to say. But he's right, like for myself, I found that it was an extremely wonderful experience to be able to sit in front of ministers, if you have never done so, and do a delegation and try to be prepared on providing information to them for, just to benefit our municipality and our residents. Mr. Councillor Restil is 100% right. The information that this thing provided to us was fantastic. It got us prepared to go into the delegation and show unity as a whole and as a council. So I thank them for that. For me, it was the delegation for energy. And I think, I hope, as Mr. Barbeau says, that we were successful in what we're doing. Yes, it was a long shot, but I think that we presented good information, valid, solid information. And that's, it'll come through, and it's going to help our municipality and help us move forward.
Thank you very much. Councillor Couchein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will just echo what has already been told without rehashing everything. But overall, it was a really great experience. I was able to meet with different colleagues from different parts of the province as well. So that's always been kind of set up those connections. But yeah, overall, I won't, like I mentioned, I won't rehash what's already been said, but it was a overall very, very great experience. And fingers crossed that they'll remember West Nepesing.
Finally, councillor Gagnon?
Merci, Madame Maire. Moi, je veux juste ajouter que c'est un petit peu intimidant. Puis moi, j'ai fait souvent des présentations en avant du public. Mais quand tu as le ministre avec tous ses assistants-là, puis il prend tous des notes, puis comme il écoute très très bien sur caisse, c'est bien important. Le travail d'équipe qu'on a fait, toutes les gens ensemble, puis la préparation de la documentation qu'on a eue, du personnel ici administratif, c'était incroyable. C'est fait qu'on n'a pas eu besoin de poser de questions ou de venir comme tout était presque scripté pour nous autres. Il voulait juste bien articuler avant notre salade, puis espérons que on va avoir du succès puis que les deux delegations qu'on a eues vont porter fruits aux résidents du West Nepesing. Merci, Madame Maire.
Merci. And I will wrap up with saying thank you to all the councillors who attended and just shared those thoughts. I agree with all of it. I will tell you, I don't think we can underestimate the importance of the relationship that we're able to forge with the provincial government. You know, it's always said that municipality is our creature of the province. Much of our funding comes from the province in different ways and different sorts. I appreciated being part of the specific delegations for the specific asks, but I believe the real takeaway was, was the team effort that we put in. You know, again, when we went into the delegations, I wanted to make sure that each member of council who attended had a role to play. So we all took turns speaking at the various delegations. Councillor Saint-Louis, councillor Glamier for the Ministry of Energy, and councillor Restil and councillor Couchein with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. And I think that team approach really spoke to our audience, especially when we needed to reset the image of West Nepesing. I think it was really useful. And every one of the councillors and our staff who were there were so well-spoken, and I was just so proud to be a part of that team. And so it was a really great experience, I think, for all of us to work together on those delegations. So thank you very much. Unless anybody has anything else, we'll leave it at that. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda, 5.1.3, still under general government, is some municipal property dispositions. And would you like me to pass it to Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay. And for that, I'll leave it Madam Chair. There is information in your papers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item is a counteroffer. We had received earlier in the year a request from a resident to purchase 15, five meters, pardon me, five meters of property from the street to the water as a lot addition to an accursed encroachment that had taken place. We did order a writ appraisal. The amount was communicated to the resident who has made a counteroffer to that and a lesser amount indicating that he felt there was some concern that the encroachment may not have a good place. So I'll leave it at that. And council's comments are, I'm looking for directions from council.
Okay, so long and short of it is, the appraiser has given an appraisal of $40,000. The property owner has countered at $25,000. So it's up to council to decide whether to stay with the appraised value, to accept the counteroffer, to land somewhere in between. So with that, I will open the floor for questions or comments on this issue. Councillor Bonney?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. The encroachment was how many feet?
It's about a meter.
What, he requested to purchase five meters, right?
That's correct, in order to provide some room around it, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Tessier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Back in 2001, when they built the garage, was there still the same five feet or whatever that they had to allow from the line to the garage, like the?
Yes.
Okay, but the garage actually crosses the property line. Part of the garage sits on municipal property.
That's correct.
Councillor Ruart?
Through you. So I just like to clarify. So it does pass the line, which means that's why the five meter would be asked for because I think the minimum's three meters.
It's actually 1.2, but it, just to make it a little bit.
Okay, so they just?
It's just enough to be able to get around it.
And then I always, like, I'm not too sure. I don't mind the counteroffer too much, in my opinion, but it is odd when there's an appraisal for a value. So we're kind of setting a precedent as well that everyone's just going to keep coming in with lower offers. But at the same time, I don't see this property being of much value to anyone else, especially if he's already got a garage to build.
Councillor Saint-Louis?
Through you, Madam Mayor. And just to reiterate what councillor Revert is saying. I understand that, you know, there's a counteroffer that has been put forward, but if that land is not going to be used and if we deny it, or if we come with a different offer, then that's a different situation. If we deny it, then, you know, that land is just going to sit there and we're not going, you know, it's not like we can go and ask him to move his garage. I know that we're setting precedents. However, we've already set those precedents, I believe, on two occasions, fortunately or unfortunately, whichever way you want to look at it, right? So, and I mean, yes, it's going to go on, but at some point, I think that's going to be up to us. Where, where do we draw the line? So I guess what I'm getting at is, if we're talking about property that is of value that people can utilize or build or do something, and they counteroffer an extremely lower demand, then maybe that's where we draw the line. However, now we're talking about land that's never going to be used regardless. So that's just my opinion.
I have one question for you, Verka. So the landing question right now is part, is a part of municipal land that is, it's a park, right? It is a strip of land that is included in a.
It is a strip of land that is included in a part set aside as a community?
That's correct. Although that section isn't cleared?
Isn't used, yeah. Other questions or comments? Council Cushing?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was able to go through the documents and I heard something, maybe meet halfway, I'd be interested in counter offering at least, you know, going at least at 32 or 33, seeing from there. At the end of the day, the value of the property will only be worth what someone's willing to pay for. So at the end of the day, if the 32 is not enough, at least if we can, that way we're not sending a precedent for the future as well. That's just my opinion, I guess, but I would suggest counter offer, go halfway and see further.
Council Cuthbert?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Who made the appraisal?
A local company.
So it went with the fair value?
The, it was calculated on recent sales in the area on a per square, per foot of frontage basis.
So it should stand?
Council Restol, go ahead.
I just want to be left out with everybody stating their thoughts. Through you, Madam Mayor. I always wondered that as well. And it's like any negotiation in any workplace or anything. You know, we had our appraised value and they had their offer that they provided. And I think sometimes we kind of get stuck on those numbers. It has to be either or, and I don't think it has to be either or. I think that's a good suggestion by Council Cushing. We can go back and say, this is what we, this is a number that we're comfortable with. At the end of the day, it's, you know, it is land that on its own, nobody can build on. And on the other side of the coin, adding to his or this individual's land base is going to increase the value of that as well. It can't be, you know, over viewed or overlooked too much. So, you know, and then when I'm thinking, I'm thinking in my head and talking at the same time, sometimes it doesn't work too well. But Council Pellerin's comment as well, where if it's worth 40, it's worth 40. I think if we're looking longer term, if it is a sale that happens and there is some impact on the property, then taxes will rise accordingly as well. And over time, I think those costs can be, or those fees or purchase prices can be recovered in a different mechanism. But I'd be open to going back and saying, this is a number we're comfortable with.
Is there anybody spoken who would like to speak before I speak? Okay. My opinion, and I think I've been fairly consistent in the way I think on these things, and I tend to agree with Council Pellerin. We pay a property appraiser to go out and assess the value of the property. And at the end of the day, we are the keepers of the gate. This is municipal own land, which, yes, the corporation owns it, but the taxpayer is the municipality owner, you know? And we have a responsibility to maximize the value of that. And when we look at exceptions, or in this case negotiating, and I'm pretty sure I've said the same thing in the other occasions that this has come before us, the more we do it, the more people expect us to do it. So by accepting counter offers on property that has been appraised, that we have been given a value that by a professional, we are setting the precedent that every time somebody wants to buy a piece of municipal property, they should counter offer because the municipality will always negotiate. And then we, you know, we end up being the salesman here. And I just, I feel that the value is the value, and if we're paying a professional for his opinion, then that is what we should be aiming for. You know, if council decides they do want to negotiate, I'd be much happier supporting Council Cushing or Council Restol's position, that we actually try to maximize the value that we got for the property. And it's just, it's more setting a precedent. Because every time we say, well, it's worth 10, they'll go, oh, we'll give you five. You know, it just creates an expectation and that we will undervalue the assets that we are charged with safeguarding. Thank you. So with that, we do need to come to a decision on how we'd like to proceed. As I see it, there are three options. There is holding firm on the price of $40,000, which is not, accepting the counter offered by the property owner at the 25, or directing the clerk to counter the counter with a number that we would decide. So I think I'll just go by those options and to show a hand if we come to a counter, then we can have a further discussion on what that counter would be. So all those in favor of holding firm on 40,000? Oh, four, five. Five? That's where we're going. Okay. That's where we're going. Thank you very much.
Okay. So the second item, the second item is, the second item is an offer from an abutting landowner to purchase some unopened road allowances, abutting the property at 97 Bay Street. That is the Rainbow Concrete property, which has been decommissioned. However, the owners of the property have indicated that they are looking at other business and would like to expand the property to the west and to the rear. There are two unopened road allowances. There's 33 feet on the west boundary, being a part of Pine Street, and there is 66 feet to the north, being part of an unopened Spring Street. Plus, there is a very small piece of land that would be part of land that's actually on Front Street, but it crosses and is transected by the tracks. So it's, so there's a little piece of land there. So I had given you an indication of what the value, or not the value, the area of their pieces are. You'll note that on the east boundary, that Spring Street allowance was already closed and conveyed to the abutting landowner some number of years ago. So they are seeking to see if council would be interested in closing those road allowances and entering into a purchase arrangement.
I'll just ask a question for clarification. So the gray area that's shown within the red area is a portion of land that is owned by the municipality, not a road allowance, a separate piece of land that's owned by the municipality.
That's correct.
And it's not currently attached to any other parcel. It's a weird kind of standalone orphaned piece of land.
That's correct.
Okay. And just on the, so Spring Street that ends at the property abutting, the subject property.
Yes.
And there is also no deal allowances on the other side have been closed as well.
There wasn't, it doesn't...
There never, there never was any road allowances there, like these weren't closed at some point.
No, it was never there.
Okay, thank you. Council Pellerin?
Yes, Madam Mayor. What's the zoning on this?
Well, the roads don't have zoning.
No, the area around...
On the subject? Industrial, M2.
On both sides?
Yes.
So by itself, something can be developed on it? How big is that piece?
The one it's being added to?
The whole piece in red?
I didn't do an actual measure. The Pine Street is about 33, in the, actually, here.
Point seven eight of an acre.
Point seven eight of an acre. Thank you, Mr. Barbour.
The complete land inside the red line is 0.7 of an acre?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not really big enough to do anything on its own. So saying that, I think it should be, if we do go that route, should be available to either neighbors.
It's entirely up to council if they, we can reach out, I can reach out to the abutting landowner on the other side.
Okay, so with... On both sides or just on the...
Just on the west.
On the west side. Well, the first step here is to declare surplus, is that correct?
For the little piece of land, and the road allowances would have to be declared to be closed and stopped.
So the first decision is, is do we want to, are we willing to be, like, get rid of these lands? And then we can determine the method by which we do that.
That's correct.
Is that okay with Council Pellerin? So the first decision we need to make is, are these surplus to our needs? Do we want a allowance? And then once that happens, if council feels it's appropriate, you would reach out to...
Opinion of value first.
Opinion of value?
Yeah.
And then, okay.
Actually, I'm just, I'm just looking at all options. If you've got the both sides, it would be fair to offer it to one guy and not the other. And the other thing is that if it was there for that purpose, is it still, is it never going to be used as a road allowance or...
No. Through you, no. Spring Street, as she indicated, is, it was already closed at a certain portion. The other portions on the back of the person's property. The only other portion of road allowance that would be in question would be whether the abutting owner, and you're right, Council Pellerin, my recommendation would be, when there's a potential for surplus land or a closed road allowance, that could be a benefit to property owners, then you should offer it to both property owners. Back in the day, pre-municipal act, we used to offer half of them, and you just go half one way, half the other. But the new act says we were allowed to sell parcels just as is, right?
Yes. And I do, I didn't do the title search on the abutting land, but because this piece is only 33 feet wide, I suspect that the other half has already been added to the other property at some point in time. We can certainly see if the abutting landowner wants... Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Okay, so would council be in agreement to both, you could do the phrase...
To stop and close the road allowances?
Close the road allowances and to declare the small piece of land that is gray located inside the red as surplus as a first step? Okay, hands please. All in favor of that as first step?
They'll have a bylaw at the next meeting.
So we'll do, yeah, there'll be a bylaw in the next meeting for the bed closures and the supplexing the land and then...
Have taken an appraisal and reach out to the abutting landowner.
Okay. Okay, and one more under property matters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last item is property and field. And I did do a little bit of research on this one and I never did come up with a, and I have to figure out why. Back in, after the flood in the late 70s, the township of Field acquired a bunch of land from people who had homes along the river. And they were, those lands were acquired and they were given lots in the subdivision behind the case Populera, is building lots in exchange. There was a home on this Part One property showing on the map that I provided, and those people were given a lot. They also owned the Part Two. And for reasons, I have no idea why the township didn't take that piece, they only took the Part One. The Part Two has obviously changed hands, and the new owners of the Part Two would like to know if the municipality would be willing to give back the Part One, or not give back to, could they acquire the Part One from the municipality as a lot addition to their property? And just, it was acquired because of the flood, but is not indicated as floodplain in our current documentation.
Okay, and what is the size of the landing question, like the triangle part one?
Oh, man, I do have...
I can't, because I can't...
It's an irregular shape. It's about, it's about 100 and...
Eighteen meters?
No, this would be in, this was in feet and inches. It's about 129 feet deep on the one boundary, 200 on the other, and looks to be about...
23?
Says 0.7 acres.
Thank you.
0.7 acres?
Did I look that?
That's what it says here.
Thank you, Council Pellerin.
Thank you.
0.7 of an acre, yes.
And what's on the, what's on the other side of the question?
I don't know. I think there's a house there, but I...
Okay.
It should show actually on, yeah, there's a house. Or some kind of a structure.
There's a structure in that lot as well, yes. Or is that an offset?
It's an offset. It's vacant. There was a house on there, but it's been polished.
Any questions or comments from members? The first step is to declare the land surplus to our needs, then you have to get an appraisal of them.
That's correct.
Okay, so council, is everybody in favor of declaring these lands surplus and having the clerk obtain an appraisal of value? Hands please. Thank you. Madam Chair. Okay, and one more item under General Government, seems like a long one tonight, is date and location of future offsite council committee of the whole meeting. So as you will all remember, back in June, we took the show on the road and hosted one of our council meetings in Manetteville. In my opinion, it was a huge success. We had a lot of people show up, more than I think any of us expected. I think we had 25 to 30 people in the gallery that night. And I think that for people in the outlying areas of municipalities, it's very meaningful for council to come to them. And so with council's approval, we are seeking permission, direction from council to arrange the next one. And that would be probably in October or early November, before the weather turns up. So with that, I'll pass it on to Mr. Barbour. I don't know if you have some...
Oh, it's certainly a council decision, Your Worship. I guess the thinking that went along and went along with it would be going from the outside in. So we were thinking River Valley or Dezonie. That's for you. River Valley, but the council can choose any, any area. Typically, we've held these in North Manetteville, Leving, Werner, Field, River Valley, and Cash Bay. So it's council's choice, but if we were staying true to form, I would go River Valley and then next spring, go Leving, and then next Field, and then eventually make our way in.
Okay. I would be fine with that. Is there, has, does that have recommendations for a location or venue in that area?
River Valley has one location, and they'd be more than happy to receive us. They're wonderful people. They sometimes serve cookies. And so it's the old Golden Age Club in River Valley. And I would be recommending or thinking, just thinking out loud, that, you know, General Government's a bunch of government stuff, which might be interesting. But the aspect that deals with the community more would be the second meeting of the month. So I'd suggest the second meeting of October. That way you'd have community services and public works on the agenda.
Does anybody have questions or comments or thoughts on this item? Okay, so all in favor, and this is a rough call. We will bring this as a resolution, or is this...
Just formalized, sure.
Okay. So I just, I'd just like to see if the council's in favor of us looking to plan a council roadshow to River Valley in October, likely the second meeting. We'll work on the dates and whatnot. Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Okay, and so the next item on the agenda, we just have one item, 5.2, under emergency measures and public safety. With that, I will pass it to our Chair, Council Saint Louis.
Thank you, Your Worship. So through you, Madam Mayor, I redirect to Ms. Craddock, so she can provide us some information on the heat relief response plan that she's been so diligently looking.
And actually, thank you, Chair. I can't take credit for this. This is a team approach with our fire team and emergency services over there and our communications folks. So really what we're doing and looking at, you know, so we have emergency management plans for the municipality for when really big things happen and stuff like that. And obviously, as the summer started this year, it started hot. And look to kind of create a formalized approach to what we're doing in heat warning events. We will follow this up with also kind of like a whole climate thing and deal with cold and types like that as well. But so that we're able to sort of move quickly on... But so that we're able to sort of move quickly on things so that, you know, because when a heat's coming in and we've got it there, we don't have to wait for the next council meeting, that we've got it in a plan that the council approves of and what we're doing. We didn't reinvent the wheel on any of this. We went out to our health unit. We went out to some of our partners, took a look at what our neighbors were doing, and then sort of put together this strategy. Kind of the high level things you want to keep an eye on is what will trigger it? And so obviously, you know, yesterday was a really hot day. But there is actually classifications that are kind of federal classifications that our health unit uses and that the, all the health units use as far as when they actually trigger what is a heat warning. So it's not just when you get the little warning on your phone that there's a heat warning. So it is daytime forecasted greater or equal to 29 degrees Celsius, with overnight being forecasted at greater than 18, and humidex is forecast to be greater than 36 degrees. So it's sort of the three pieces all together make actual a heat warning, and then this is when this triggers. It's not that we won't help out folks in between, but that's when this triggers. So both our emergency services and our communications folks are on sort of these automatic notifications when the weather, Environment and Climate Change Canada triggers these warnings, then they get a response so that we can quickly respond to it. And what it really means is that we're going to have sort of designated cooling centers and areas where folks can go. And these are actually public areas that are open generally anyways. So, you know, people are always kind of welcome to come into our libraries, especially we've got all these flashpads. At least where our beaches are and things like that. But if we got into a heat warning where we actually need, particularly in our outlying areas where we want to go in and actually open up the Werner Arena or trigger the Field Library to open on a day that they're not usually open and things like that, this is what we would do there. And so we would pull together our folks in communication or in community services, emergency services, our library folks on board, and just be able to say, yep, these facilities are open. Here's where people can go. In addition, it just provides, you know, a lot of other information as far as, you know, things that people can do to stay cool. We are fortunate that we do live where we do and that, you know, we're not all surrounded by concrete and towers and things like that. And there are options for people to go and places for people to go. Talks about where folks can watch for notices and things like that. Again, because, you know, these things are going to happen quickly and we want to have the policy out there so folks know for next year what the things are and where to watch and stuff like that. But obviously, not everyone's going to have access to the channels that we might have on there. So we have discussed with, particularly with our emergency services and our bylaw, that when they're out and about in these events, they're just going to keep an eye on who's out in the community. And if there are people that look like they're in distress or we know where there are pockets of people camping and things like that to actually make sure that they're aware that there are resources for them and places for them to go. Certainly, we've got a couple very active community groups as well. And so, you know, once they're aware that we've got a policy and we've got a place, then hopefully we'll stay in touch with some populations that might be more at risk. And I know that we think sort of underhomed or homeless folks, but also we do need to keep in mind, you know, folks that are living in places without air conditioning, particularly if you've got seniors or health conditions and you're living in situations without air conditioning. And sometimes in these events, it's just people need a place to go for the day to cool off. So all that's encompassed in here. Despite the weather today, I hope that we're past heat for this year, but it will be in place for next year. Like I said, then, you know, we're going to build on this and look at what our cold thresholds are and sort of build a whole sort of climate response strategy. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll open up the floor for anybody who's got any questions or comments. Madam Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Craddock. So the triggers are all three of those. It's like a triad of triggers. And all three of those things need to be met before an emergency is called. And then in the communications section, I know obviously we'll use our social media channels and it's so difficult to communicate quickly with such a large geographic area. So we'll also be working with our community partners, like the not-for-profit housing corporations too, if there's a way to get notifications out, say, to the seniors apartments or, you know, making sure that people know what resources are available for them. So in addition to social media, I guess I'm asking, is what other kinds of communication strategies will we be using to reach out to our residents?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely. So the hope is for having a policy in place now that we can share it with all of our community partners now so that they're aware by next year what is going on. And certainly, you know, those areas or those folks that, you know, like I said, like not-for-profit housing, absolutely, we can have them as part of our, you know, communication protocol, for sure. Yep.
And I'm sorry, I just, I did have one more question. Okay, actually, you can go to somebody else and I'll remember what my third question is. So I reserve the right to come back.
Let's see if there's anybody else. Would anybody else have any questions? Councilor Reston?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just to give the mayor some time to answer his questions. I just wanted to say thanks for the work that was put into the document. I think looking at different strategies under the communication channels and some of them are what a lot of people are used to, right? With Facebook or email or municipal website. And some people unfortunately don't have access to that. So I like the fact that there's some other channels there where we're looking at public-facing municipal personnel and that's great to see. And also, you know, us as well. If we're out there, once we get this going, we can share that information. If we do, you know, come across an individual or groups who might need some relief from the heat. I am hopeful that as we go implement this and as it's something that's in use moving forward, that it's going to become more common knowledge with everybody in terms of access and what they can, where they can be to help themselves in situations where there's extreme heat. Kind of related to this, but on the other end of the spectrum, just wanted to share, it's not within this document, but we are doing some work at D-Side on the cold front for winters. So we're probably going to have some information coming from that perspective. But I think for work that we can do as a municipality to help, you know, residents and people visiting our community, I think it's a great start. Like everything, we can implement it and reassess it later on to see how effective it is or if there's things that can change. And I don't know if the mayor's quite ready yet. But just my last comment that I have is just that we know, you know, obviously, that as a municipality, we contribute a significant amount to the public health unit. And it's good to see that we're utilizing those resources by working with them to develop documents like this. So appreciate the partnership there and the work that's being done.
Thank you.
Okay, I do remember my other question. So I think it was in regards to location. So in Sturgeon Falls or in Werner and even in Field, we have some good public locations. River Valley, we have a library as well. No. Okay, so that was my question. In places like River Valley, is there opportunity to work with partner organizations like the Golden Age Club? I guess that the schools aren't a good option because they don't like outsiders coming in. But to find some locations that may serve residents in the more remote areas of our municipality? Sorry, three, Mr. Chair, Ms. Craddock.
Yeah, and certainly, you know, the challenges of our municipality are geography. You know, and that certainly is always a challenge. But absolutely, you know, we can reach out to the partners in those communities where we don't have facilities and certainly see, you know, in the time that I've been here, we've gone through fires and floods and a variety of big disasters and have always found that our partners in our far-flung communities are very willing to help. So certainly, we can reach out and kind of see if we had to tap them for a day, if they would be available for us. Yeah.
So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And anybody else who's got any questions or comments? All right. I would like to just finish off by saying, the same as Mr. Restool or Councilor Restool, thank you very much. I'm sure there's a lot of hard work that was put into it and that our residents are definitely going to benefit from being able to utilize this plan and hopefully for the better. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Very much. And with that, we can close our committee of the whole portion of the meeting and move on to regular business. Okay, so we'll open the regular meeting 6.1 with our cons...
Consent agenda.
Thank you. Consent agenda.
It is moved by Councilor Chruschain and seconded by Councilor St. Louis. Be resolved that the items listed under the consent agenda for September the 5th, 2023 be adopted as presented.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Carrie? Next, in section 6.2, we have some correspondence from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing in regards to the building cost for fund. It's a... So they actually made some announcements at Anne Owen in regards to the fund. There's just information there in regards to fund. Does anybody have any questions about funding opportunities? Councilor Chruschain?
Just to comment, I was there when the premier had announced it, so I'm really happy to see the 10% being set aside. So 120 million for small communities, it's a lot. And I think it's better than nothing to get things started, so.
Thank you. Councilor Tessier?
Oh, I think I answered the question. I guess we fall in that 10%. We all have a target for the province?
Uh, no, we don't have a target for the province. We have set targets in our, in the application for CMHC Housing Accelerator Fund. There were targets that we needed to set for that. Is that correct? But they're not provincially mandated targets.
No, I believe it was as per our housing, if I'm not mistaken.
So, yeah, I mean, the details on how they're going to distribute those funds or how that's going to roll down the pipe aren't out yet, but there is encouraging news to see the announcement of funding coming through. So with that, we'll move to unfinished business. And we have 6.3.1 to adopt the bylaw, the adopt tax bylaw.
It is moved by Councilor Ticey and seconded by Councilor Restool. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202368, being a bylaw to provide for the regulation, licensing, and governing of vehicles for hire in the West Nippising municipality shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay, thank you very much. So this is, I think, the second time or maybe third. And Councilor Tessier had great points. I think that there was a little ambiguity around the brokerages. And I just want to check with Councilor Tessier that those, you've read through those?
Yes.
It's clear now, I guess?
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Shump for explaining and working with me. And I'm working with the bylaw now.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments before we put this to a vote, vote to pass or pass the bylaw? Okay, with that, motion's been read. All in favor? Okay, Carrie, thank you. Okay, and now we move on to new business.
It is moved by Councilor St. Louis and seconded by Councilor Ticey. Be it resolved that following persons be appointed to the West Nippising Youth Advisory Committee for the remainder of the 2023-2024 term. Michelle Rivera, Michael Rowling, Riley Trudeau, Samantha Lavoe, and Michaela Saint George.
Okay, thank you. I'm quite excited about this. I'm very much looking forward to getting started with this team of youth volunteers and hopefully a few more. I'm hoping that with school starting today, we'll get the word out to some schools. And I'd love to see some of the younger students, maybe some of the new grade nines step forward. So, you know, it'll take us another couple of weeks hopefully to talk to some of those spaces, but this is an exciting start week. And I believe it's Councilor Nichol who will be sitting on the advisory committee. We're both pretty excited to get some young people and take their ideas. Any questions or comments on this? Councilor Restool?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just a little positive comment. It's nice to see that we have youth coming forward. And like you mentioned, hopefully, we can fill the whole roster. But one thing that I thought was nice too was of the five that we have, they're from four different communities within West Nippising. So it's good to see that variety across, just starting off like that. That's great to see.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Most... I'm sorry.
Councilor St. Louis?
So, and I know that we're talking about maybe looking at getting other individuals. Have we thought about maybe reaching out to the high schools, other older schools, and advertising the school? Or if we can, maybe even make an announcement? And I know they have announcements every morning to see if anybody is interested. They might not be aware.
I'm not sure what steps staff are taking to promote the youth committee through the schools.
We'll take any and all suggestions. So, Mr. Cool, I heard that. That's a good idea, as Your Worship indicated. I think now is a good time where we have more of a captive audience, so to speak. So we'll be looking at that to raise the compliment. Thank you for the suggestion.
Anybody else? Okay, so motion's been read. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Okay. It is moved by Councilor Tessier and seconded by Councilor Chruschain. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202371, being a bylaw to authorize the disposition of certain lands in exchange for the granting of an easement for drainage on Dutrezak Road shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Thank you. Okay. Do you want to give a brief explanation of...
Thank you. May, Madam Chair, this was a project that started with some drainage work that we were doing on Dutrezak Road. And it was determined that the current outlet for which we have been using to drain the road into the municipal drain, that the municipality does not have formal easement on the property. So we approached the landowner to see about acquiring an easement. And he agreed to the easement, but did ask that in exchange that we can reconvey road allowances. He has two little stub road allowances that lead out to Dutrezak Road on his property. His father was the original developer of that subdivision along the front there. And I guess the idea was to leave those little road allowances for future development on the backlot. He has no intentions of developing the backlot lands and was just requesting the municipality convey those little bits back to him as additions to his own lot in exchange for the easement.
Okay, and the previous council agreed?
They did. And they were actually stocked up and closed last year.
Does anybody have any questions or comments in regards to this? Okay, we thought the motion's been read. All those in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Councilor Chruschain and seconded by Councilor Tessier. Whereas council has received a request from No More Tears West Nippising for the use of three parking spaces on the east side of King Street for the purpose of conducting a fundraising activity on September the 9th, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Be it resolved that council for the West Nippising municipality approves the use of three parking spaces on the east side of King Street for the purpose of conducting a fundraising activity on September 9th, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00?
Thank you very much. So you'll see the requesting included in your information package. I just have one question for Mr. Men, if you don't mind. So if this is approved, the public works crew is automatically scheduled. They don't need to do anything. The bylaws will show up and disappear at times.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Councilor Tessier and seconded by Councilor St. Louis. Whereas council has received a request from the Cash Bay United Seniors 50 Club for the use of the Cash Bay Hall at no cost for the purpose of conducting fundraising bingo events. Be it resolved that council for the West Nippising municipality hereby authorizes the use of the Cash Bay Hall at no cost by the Cash Bay United Seniors 50 Club for the purpose of conducting fundraising bingo. by the Cash Bay United Seniors Fifty Club for the purpose of conducting fundraising bingo.
Thank you very much. So this request covers once per month until June of two thousand twenty-four? Oh, correct.
Just a second.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this request? Okay, motion's been read. All those in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Councilor Saint Louis and seconded by Councilor T C. Whereas a request has been received from the Legion Branch two twenty-five to use the municipal property adjacent to the Legion on River Street in Sturgeon Falls for the purpose of holding an outdoor jamboree on September the tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Be it resolved that council for the West Nippising Municipality grants permission to the Legion Branch two two five for the use of the municipal property adjacent to the Legion on River Street for the purpose of holding a jamboree on September the tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Any questions or comments on this?
Other question? So all the grass that's beside like the dams, that's all municipal land?
That's correct.
I thought it was actually legion land.
I was going to say the same thing.
Okay.
Was that? Sorry.
Thank you. No more questions.
Yeah, that's very interesting to know. Okay, any other questions or comments on that? Okay, I just have one question for Mr. Barbour, if you don't mind. When we're granting permission for people to use our land such as this for an event such as this, they are provided to provide proof of interest, like you need to have a liability in the case that somebody.
That's right.
Gets drunk and trips or.
Or any.
I'm sorry. No, if somebody twists an ankle while they're dancing to the wonderful music or.
More of that.
Okay.
Oh, anytime we ask for to be named as.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Councilor Calade and seconded by Councilor Gagne. Whereas council has received a request from the West Nippising Childcare Corporation for the use of the Cash Bay Hall and the Sturgeon River House Museum at no cost for the purpose of holding a Christmas party and a Halloween party respectively. Be it resolved that council for the municipality of West Nippising hereby authorizes the use of the Cash Bay Hall and the Sturgeon River House Museum at no cost to the West Nippising Childcare Corporation for the purpose of conducting Christmas and Halloween parties.
Okay, thank you very much. Also, the dates and information for those requests are also included. If you have any questions on this? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, Carrie.
It is moved by Councilor Rivard and seconded by Councilor Calade. Be it resolved that Don Parsons be appointed to the West Nippising Accessibility Advisory Committee.
So with this appointment, was there a vacancy when we did the initial appointments? Or has there been a resignation?
No, there was a vacancy.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie? Okay, and. Okay. So then we will move on to section eight. We did have an addendum for this evening's meeting. And I'll just give a brief explanation of why we are here. So, Councilor Gagne, who is the chair of the Police Services Board, reached out to me a couple of weeks ago indicating that there was a vacancy on the Police Services Board. At the time that we did the original community member appointments, the makeup of the Police Services Board was two members of our councilor, council, one member from the community, and two members that were provincially appointed. And since we did the original appointment, the province has actually changed the makeup of that board. So now it is two members of council, two members from the community, and one provincial appointee. There was not, sorry, Councilor Saint Louis was a previous provincial appointee to that board. And on becoming a member of council, that position as a provincial appointee was vacated and not filled. So at this point, we have a vacancy. And for the sake of expediency in filling it, I'm proposing that we do so by the ballot that's been provided to you. When we had the original applications, we had, and the tallies were done. Jean Guy Seguin was the successful member of the community who was appointed to that board. And there were two applicants who placed second by the number of votes during that council meeting. And they are, as shown on your ballot here, Campbell Anderson and J P Martin. And in my mind, if we had filled both seats that day, on the next step, we would have taken the second place finishers and done a vote off between those two to fill that position. So first, I would like to make sure that council is okay in using that procedure. And if so, we have a voting ballot. And if not, we can determine if council feels they'd like to go back out to the public to see if there's additional interest. I don't feel that there's been enough time that it would change much. And I think that this provides fairness for the people who put their. Back to all of the board for questions or comments. Councilor Saint Louis?
I assume these two individuals have been contacted to see if they're still interested. Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Tessier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we still have their profile, their applications submitted, just as a reference?
Yeah.
Because I don't remember.
Yeah. We don't, but you know what? We might, and I know it's the last, well, we're going into post anyway. If we take it right now, would you be able to? So what we could do is propose to take our break, which we would do in ten minutes anyway. And that would give Madam, or time just to pull the two profiles and print those. As long as everybody's okay with this procedure. Councilor Restool?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to say I'm in agreement with the process that we have here, just so we're not doing searching for no reason if we don't agree with it. But I think it's the easiest way to do it, that people are still interested in filling this slot, so.
Councilor Calade?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just out of curiosity, this, how many meetings do they have per year?
Four. Quarterly.
And it's a paying committee?
I'm not sure. It's not paid by the municipality. It's paid by the O P P, if it is.
I believe it was, right? No, yes.
Is it, is it a?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes.
Per meeting or? Yeah, per meeting. Per meeting. Okay, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? So if we're all okay with the process, I would propose that we, I know, have you, you've read the motion already? Or do we have to? Can we take a break in the middle of?
Okay, yeah. Take a break.
And that way, sorry to make you work during the break.
I'm moving a second for the break, please.
You, Rivard and Gagne.
It is moved by Councilor Rivard and seconded by Councilor Gagne. At approximately seven fifty p.m., a motion was tabled for ten minute recess.
Okay, all those in favor? Carrie? Thank you.
I've already. I've already, they're easy for.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're just back from a, a short recess. Uh, we are in the middle of, uh, item number eight point one, uh, the addendum to this evening's meeting. Uh, so we have a vacancy on the Police Services Board, uh, to fill. Uh, prior to the, uh, break, we discussed, uh, the, uh, process by which we're gonna do so. And we seem to be consistent with my council that that was, uh, an acceptable way to fill the vacancy. Uh, so in front of, uh, all of our members now, uh, we do have a ballot. Uh, the, uh, application forms that were provided to us in January, who did it in? December?
December.
December, um, uh, have been provided to council for their review now. So, uh, at this point, we'll take a moment. I'll ask each member of council, uh, to mark one name on, on the ballot and Ms. Cradick, uh, will come around to collect those, uh, from us. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so seven votes to two for Campbell Anderson. So be it resolved that Campbell Anderson will be appointed. It is moved by Counsel Calery and seconded by Counsel Gagné. Be it resolved that Campbell Anderson be appointed to the West Nipissing Police Service Board for the remainder of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six term.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Carrie? Okay, um, number nine is mayor's report, but I think that, uh, that our members have provided, uh, adequate update to AMO, which would have been the, uh, topic I spoke about this evening. Uh, the only other thing that I will say is that as much as summer was fantastic, I am extremely excited that it's September again and we get back to our regular, uh, meeting every two weeks. Uh, I will say that, uh, I found summer a little difficult. I felt a little disconnected from you all and, uh, I'm looking forward just to getting back into, uh, our regular routine. That the agendas won't quite be so heavy, um, uh, with meeting just once a month in the summer. And, uh, just, uh, looking forward to, to getting back into the, uh, things, uh, uh, for the fall season. So, uh, and with that, uh, we'll take the resolution to proceed into closed session.
It is moved by Counsel Rivard and seconded by Counsel Calery. Be it pursuant to section two hundred and nine of the Municipal Act, be it resolved that we proceed into closed session to discuss the following: the security of the property of the municipality or local board concerning Saint Jean Road.
All those in favor? Carrie?